I call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, November 25th, 2024, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. The recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website as soon as possible. Welcome, members of the community here tonight, to observe the important work being done on behalf of all school district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman, we have some items in the table file. Will you update us?
We do. We have several items in the table file this evening. They are consent agenda items, personnel related to appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, some leaves of absences, and a resignation.
Thank you very much. If there are no objections, we will add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Okay, move by Jeff. Second. Right, Ben? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Any of you have anybody signed up for public comment tonight? Okay, then we will move on to announcements and recognitions, which tonight we have a very special recognition to make of our Anita is retiring, and we just want to honor her with some special treats. We have cake for anybody who would like to partake. We have some refreshments as well, and then I want to open up the floor to anybody who would like to make some comments, and I will just open up by saying, very grateful for our paths crossing. I'm grateful for your kindness and your thoughtfulness, and you will be very much missed. Anybody else want to make comments? Or you can connect afterward to Amy.
Anita, I've been fortunate enough to be here the whole time that you've been here, and I was trying to think back if I knew of any mistakes you made in that time, and I could not think of any. And just how organized and how efficient you've been as you've kept the board moving forward, and what a great partner you've made with Dr. Hillman to really, I think we've done so much for our school district in the time that you've been here, and a lot of that falls to you, because I know as busy as Dr. Hillman is, you are as busy supporting him making all of that happen, and supporting all of us on the board. So with much gratitude for all these years together, and wishing you all the best in retirement.
What else? Rob?
So, when I started on the board, we didn't, we had a different superintendent. We had Dr. Richardson. We had Anita Delzer as his assistant, and when they retired, it was really hard to imagine the district office without them, as it is now really hard to imagine it without you. And thinking about that, I think actually Dr. Richardson and Anita are still present in the district because of the contributions they've made, and you will always be present in the contributions you've made. So I think, you know, when you leave, I think you think, I hope that I've left the place in a strong position, and that I've left it in good hands, and I think you've done both of those things.
Thank you, Rob. Anybody else want to take opportunity? Jeff?
Yeah, we went from Anita to Anita, obviously, as you know, but thanks for your service, and I'm sure making all of those trips, crossing the, you know, coming, coming this way over 35 W is very bold. So I mean, you got to go back the other way. So I know that there's always a division and a joke about that border. But anyway, no, I just grateful for your service, and I'm sure there's always good days and bad days as far as running the school district, and I just glad you're here to look through that, and I wish you the best in retirement.
Lovely. Thank you. Anybody else want to make a comment? Now you can connect after. All right, Dr. Hillman?
Yes, so Anita has been such a joy to work with for the last six years. I've just got a few things I wrote here. So Anita Ozzy started with the school district in January of 2018, and she's made measurable contributions to the districts over the past six years, as many board members have had said here tonight, and the people who stopped him to give you cards, you've made a difference for people, and it's wonderful for you to hear that as you retire. It's impossible, Anita, to name all the ways that you've made a difference, so I'm not even going to try for the exhaustive list. Anita is at the heart of the navigational system that keeps the district's work moving forward. She is a master of the Tetris puzzle, that is my calendar, a positive yet realistic thought partner, the ultimate organizer, a compassionate listener, and a person who is just fun to be around. And during the pandemic, when we saw people at their best and at their worst, Anita played a crucial role in our communications. She was critical in helping the district serve the community well during what was a very difficult time for so many people, and during that time of tension and frustration and anxiety, Anita was steadfast, always diplomatic, and always kind, even when people didn't show the same in return. And for me, Anita has been an incredible colleague. She is supportive while also telling me what I need to hear. She's been the model of professionalism and an exceptional public servant and dear friend. You have earned retirement, and so thanks for your service to our students, our staff, and the community. So you still have a couple of days left for me to bother you, but we're so grateful for the service you provided and showing Kelly the ropes as she begins here tonight. So, thanks, Anita.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Yes, nice talk. We'd like to get a picture of you with your cake and flowers. Logan, would you help us out and get a picture of Anita? And then Laura will help cut the cake, so that anybody in the audience, if you'd like to take a piece of cake now or on your way out, you are welcome to. Thank you. Okay, item five for tonight is our discussion and reports.
Couple of other announcements.
Oh, you do? Okay, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, we do have a couple of other announcements this evening. So the first is around a really special event that was taking place today in Washington, DC. And so Spring Creek student Grant Zimmerman had an extra special Thanksgiving experience this year. Grant traveled to Washington, DC to help his dad, John, present two turkeys, Peach and Blossom, to President Biden for the Presidential Turkey Pardoning. And so we congratulate Grant and John, and I believe that I understand that Peach was the turkey that was officially pardoned. My understanding is both will be pardoned, but that all happened today, and so we congratulate Grant. John is the president of the National Turkey Federation, so that's the responsibility of that office to be able to participate in the ceremonial pardoning of the turkeys. And so congratulations to Grant. I know there was other students from Spring Creek, his little friend group who had been involved in raising them, and on our social media today, we posted a story from KSTP from the summer, and then also the National Public Radio Show, This American Life, also highlighted this, and we've given a link to that in our social media pages as well. So continuing on with our Sesquicentennial Minute, again, from this particular book here, and I will tell you that I did use ChatGPT tonight to help summarize the Sesquicentennial Minute, but what I want to share is that there were some descriptions about the curriculum from 1927 in the Orange and Black, which I shared last time, was the yearbook. And there were descriptions of each academic department, and those revealed a real interplay between traditional educational philosophies and the growing influence in 1927 of practical, real-world applications. The curriculum aimed to blend intellectual development with tangible benefits for citizenship and employment. And the traditional academic disciplines, such as English, mathematics, natural and physical sciences, social sciences, and languages were framed as essential for becoming a quote-unquote "better citizen" and "better worker." And despite their foundational role in intellectual development, these disciplines were keen to showcase their direct applicability to real life. So there was a lot of focus on what do you need to know both to be a citizen of the nation and also to be someone who was productive in the workforce. You also started to see some newer departments emerge around this time. So departments like Home Economics, Commercial Studies, Agriculture, and something that they called Manual Training, which was a real focus in the 1920s. This was intended on equipping students with explicit and practical skills necessary for adulthood. These courses mirrored a broader societal push towards education that directly prepared students for economic and social productivity. And finally, I thought this was really interesting. We're celebrating our Sesquicentennial, but it turns out that the Northfield Public Schools Art Department is celebrating its centennial. So art, the high school's newest academic department, was added in 1924 because the importance of art in daily life was realized. Art had applications in many fields in the commercial world and taught appreciation, taste, discrimination, and a desire for civic betterment. The new department expected to be taken seriously, and it was quoted as saying, "Learning to draw is learning to see, and its value cannot be truthfully questioned by any up-to-date school." So we're sharing stories about our Sesquicentennial at each meeting. Today, we thought we'd look back a little bit less than 100 years and write to 100 years with our art department talking about the curriculum and the expectations for students at that time. So that's your Sesquicentennial, two and a half minutes today. And again, Bruce Caldwell's book, City of Schools, and I know that you can check it out at the library, or you could get it from the Northfield History Center.
Okay, board members, do any of you have any announcements or recognitions at this moment? Okay, then we'll move on to item five, which is our discussion and reports. And first up, we have employee engagement overviews. Dr. Hillman will present an overview of some of the tools that the district uses to provide staff members a voice in their workplace and to measure employee engagement.
We thought that it's a good time at this point in the year to just share with you a little bit about the work that we do to support our employees and to make sure that their voice is heard in the workplace. What I'm going to share with you tonight are just a few vignettes of the kinds of things that we do, but these are both tools and measurement systems that we use to try to make sure that we're recruiting and retain the highest quality employees to do good things for kids, which is what we hire people to do. So of course, we don't start a district presentation without the vision and focusing on preparing every student for lifelong success by developing critical thinkers who are curious and ready to engage in our society. And when we look at our strategic commitments, people is a really important one to us. And then when we look at the benchmarks, what we're looking at is benchmark number eight, that all employees report satisfaction in the workplace. Now, when we say all employees, this is aspirational, because I believe schools are a vocation, right? It's a job that we have that is serving a purpose bigger than ourselves, but it is still a workplace. And I don't know of anybody, maybe except for Anita, who loves the workplace every single day, right? So we're a workplace like any place. Also, it's an aspirational, all employees report satisfaction in the workplace. And what I hope for that, and when I rounded, we're going to talk about rounding, I rounded with 42 new teachers this fall. And I told them at the end of the session that what I really hope for for our employees is that in a moment of clarity, right, when they can take a step back without the pressure, right, without, you know, just any of the intensity of the moment, that they can say, this is a great place to work, right? It's a place where my expertise is valued, where people care about me both as a professional and as a person, that what I bring forward is taken seriously, even if the answer is no, like it has to be sometimes, that what I bring to the workplace is valued and respected. And so these are the reasons we try to measure employee engagement. So again, the purpose of this is every single position in the district has a role to serve students and to serve our community. So when we think about how we serve our staff members, it's important that we do that in a variety of different ways. I think people think of pay and benefits and all those kinds of things, but it is also about how do we make sure we capture your voice in the workplace, and how do we use that as part of our commitment to continuous improvement? So the purpose is the recruitment and retention of high-quality employees who will do good things for kids regardless of what their role is. Everyone in the district is an educator. So one of the ways that we do this, we start tonight's report with something that's called the District Services Survey. So as you know, we do our best to run a district office that is very lean, so that we can make sure that the most of our dollars are put directly into the classroom. In order to do that, we really need to have efficient systems. One of the tools that we use to help make sure that we're doing that is something that's called the District Services Survey. And we have been doing the District Services Survey since 2018, and it measures five areas. You can see those five areas on the screen. And this survey, the people who are invited to participate are building administrative assistants, so administrative assistants, and our leadership team, the people who most directly use the district office services most often. So there's anyway between 35 and probably 45 people who would be eligible to take that survey. When we look at a five-point Likert scale on those five measurements, what our partners at Student Education, they're a group that we've been working with since 2018 around service excellence, they will say that once you hit a 4.5 or higher, that you're trying to maintain that level of service. Between four point and, of course, you want to get as close to five as you can, but once you've hit 4.5, there's a natural variation that you're going to have year to year with the responses to that, those survey items, and that staying above 4.5 should really be the goal. And so our six-year average rating is 4.62. And so for the people who are surveyed, the people who most often consume the district office's office services, there's a high level of satisfaction. Now, something that's really important, anytime that you provide a survey, you should make sure there's a way to follow up and to close the loop with the people who took it. So we use a survey rollout strategy. What that survey rollout strategy is, we gather the people who participated in the survey. We share with them what the results were, and then depending on the survey, we'll talk about this a little bit with the Employee Experience Survey. So the picture that you have here is this is actually the District Services Survey rollout that happened with our district office staff in this room just a few weeks ago. And what we asked them was a couple of things. What in the survey results? What do you think we're doing to be able to yield positive results? So when we look at things like timeliness, why do you think people rated us so highly on timeliness? And staff talk about, we've got systems in place, we follow up, we have a methodology of making sure that the routine things get done. And then they will also look at things, what's one thing, we've changed this part of the question over the years. It used to be, we would say, if next year everybody gave us a five on that metric, what would it look like? What would it sound like? What would it feel like? We learned that that became very difficult, because everybody giving you a five is nearly impossible, right? So what we did is instead, we're asking the question, what's one thing that you can do in the next month in your department to improve your performance on that metric area? So it takes it from this perfection mindset, if you will, to what's something concrete that I can do in the next month to better serve the people that are around me? So that's the District Services Survey. We also have been conducting something that is called Leader Rounding, which in my humble but deadly accurate opinion is one of the biggest contributors to improving workplace culture that I have ever been a part of. And I'm such a fan of it, I have taught it to probably hundreds of other people at this point, and all of them tell me the same thing when they come back to me and say, I tried that, Matt, and you were right. It's rocket fuel for culture. And so Leader Rounding are intentional employee conversations. We do these for sure once a year. We'd like to do it more than once a year, but we've been able to hardwire it once a year. And so this fall, our leadership team had intentional employee rounding conversations with 296 employees. That's around 50%. We don't force people to round, but we offer people the chance to sign up. We ask four main questions. From time to time, the questions will shift, but these are the core questions. What's going well for you? So what has been going well? That's important to hear from people. What has been successful for them? We ask them to share what suggestions do they have for improvement. And we can show lots of different examples of suggestions that people gave that have been implemented and made a difference. Most often, what we've seen are our own systems. So something, well, what if we changed this part of this procedure? Would that make it more efficient? And so people who are, you know, working in our school every day have brilliant ideas that they can share, and if we are able to take them and use them, right, they see their voice in the workplace, and not everything that is brought forward can be acted on, right? We just, we know that. Sometimes there are things that are just brought forward and might not be something that we can do today, but maybe we can think about it a little bit more long-term. We ask people, do you have the resources and the support you need to do your job well? Do you have the stuff? Do you have the time? Do you have all those kinds of things that you need to do your job well? And then the final question in rounding is something that is really supercharges the whole system, which is, who can I recognize on your behalf for their excellent work? And this is really important, because in the workplace, often people are told what's going, what's been going wrong. And what we believe is in timely, specific, positive feedback. So we will ask, is there one person I can recognize on your behalf for their excellent work? And the person will give us the one person, they give us the specific reasons why, and then the leader shares that with the person who was complimented. So most often, that's in an email. Sometimes it could be in a handwritten note. Sometimes it might just be face-to-face. More often than not, it's via email. But if you think about it, if I am going to, if Cory and I are rounding, and Cory is saying to me, you know, Matt, I really want to let you know how well I think Rob is doing, and here's why I want to say Rob is doing well, when myself as the supervisor sends Rob an email and says, Cory, your colleague, said you're doing this thing really well, what the research says is it's actually the best for Cory, right? Cory gets the most measurable emotional acceleration out of that, because he complimented someone who he's working with with specific tangible pieces. The supervisor knew, the person who's receiving the compliment knew. Everybody wins, right? But the person who's actually giving the compliment gets the most out of that circumstance. And it's about hardwiring gratitude. There are lots of things that we can be disappointed with in each day, but when we're intentionally seeking for what is the good that is taking place around us, it lifts everyone in the system in one way, shape, or form. We also use another follow-up strategy with this. We call this the three-two-one follow-up. And so what leaders will do is they will complete this three-two-one report. It says, what are the three themes of the things that were going well? What were the two most often presented themes in the areas for improvement? And what is one leader action that I'm going to take to try to take an initial step toward improving something that we identified for improvement? At the end of the first quarter, all of our leaders come together for our Quarter One Leadership Development Institute, and we actually share all of the three-two-one reports from district office departments, buildings, and we look for themes across the district to see is there a bigger thing. More often than not, the areas for improvement are more specific to the department or the building, but we are still getting a sense for what is the theme that's across the district. So that goes into the Employee Experience Survey. We provide the Employee Experience Survey. That's an anonymous but not confidential survey. So what that means is that we don't know who took the survey, who provided the feedback. What we do share the results and the comments with leaders, and in some cases, even beyond that, depending on the circumstance. So our goal with the Employee Experience Survey is to understand what people's perceptions are of their work environment. We're looking at their engagement. We're looking at their satisfaction. We're really trying to measure culture. And what we do with the results is we are trying to look to identify areas of strength, things that we should double down on, or areas that really would need improvement. We also add a shout-out question to the Employee Experience Survey, so employees can shout each other out. That's that employee recognition. And then you've often seen the rollout, part of the goals in the school improvement plans up until this year, right? And even in some of the school improvement showcases, you saw employee experience goals. And so we'll continue to work on that piece as we move ahead. Last year, the district mean for the Employee Experience Survey was a 4.0 on a five-point scale, and that was an improvement over the previous year, and we improved on 19 of the 20 indicators year over year last year. And so anonymous surveys can sometimes be challenging, because sometimes the anonymous comments can be hurtful for people to read, but we, we need to hear all of the things and do our best to be objective about taking those comments to create a context for what the ratings that we received were, and then continuously improving the workplace. So Employee Experience Survey has been something that has really helped drive some of the improvement work that we have done. We also have worked on something called Core Performance Expectations. This is something that directly came out of a few areas. It came out of some rounding conversations. It came out of some surveys. And like many other places, our employees strive for clarity. They would like to be clear about what is expected, just like we want our students to be clear about what we're expecting. It turns out, employees would like clarity and expectations as well. So this is just a screenshot of the first page. So what we did is, for the first year of this approach, our administrative team really thought about what were the big rocks, what were the big things that we wanted to identify, just some ideas. Then we had a work team, which we're going to talk about in a moment, come together over two summers to talk about what are, you know, specifically, what are the areas that we should be able to expect from each other, and what are the descriptors of both high and low performance? We're describing high and low performance, not because we want to make people feel bad, but we need to be able to self-regulate. So most people on most days are trending toward high performance, but every single person in the district at some point during the week enters or visits low performance. And the goal is that when we visit low performance, that because we have these descriptors, we're able to self-recognize it, snap out of it, and move back toward high performance, right? It's just like if we have a musician who makes an error while they're on stage, the show must go on, right? So they correct it, and they keep moving forward, and that's what the goal is with our Core Performance Expectations. We are working toward implementing these as part of our evaluation system. That's our next step. And we've been teaching these for the last several years, rolling them out at our back-to-school breakfast and sharing them with staff. And we even have departments that are using these when they are hiring. So when they're interviewing people, they're looking at these and saying, oh, of the candidates that we're looking at right now, do we see some that, you know, might fit what we're already looking? If we can hire for people who already are demonstrating high performance in these, that helps us get people up to speed more quickly, because they already are demonstrating things that are advantageous to our school culture. So the Core Performance Expectations are things that we've had a number of people who have shared and talked that these are meaningful to them. So continue to work on those, but clarity in the workplace is something else that we strive for with employee engagement. And then finally, work teams. So I believe last summer, I think we had 81 people participate in around 10 work teams. I don't have the narrative in front of me. I think I'm pretty close there. And so what the idea of work teams are is that this is really the next advancement from committees, right? So over the years, we would have a number of kinds of committees come together. When we did committees, they were typically volunteer, right? Would you like to provide some input? And that was very common, right? That was how it worked. But what we've seen is we saw less and less people who are able to participate in committees because of a variety of reasons, childcare, other kinds of commitments. So we have been intentionally setting budget aside annually to be able to pay staff members to come in, mostly during the summer, when there is less stress on them. They're not preparing their lessons for the next day. They're not grading papers, to be able to try to give some recommendations and some advice on some complex problems that we are trying to solve. And we give the work team, the administrative team gives the work teams parameters. We say, here's the sandbox in which you have the authority to make some recommendations. We have to affirm your recommendations, or we would send it back to you. I can't think of a time where we did not affirm a recommendation of a work team. One of the most notable recent examples, you heard Hope Langston and Ray Kudry earlier this fall talk about the mathematics implementation. And it was a work team of the K5 Math Group that came together to say, how do we want to conduct this implementation, down to the level of detail of who's going to put the initial manipulative kits together for each classroom? And that turned out, we've gotten really great reviews about how the implementation has gone. We can directly tie it back to the work team recommendations that were within a certain set of parameters that we were able to provide for them. So those kinds of things, we see more and more people who are willing to participate in work teams because they see that their voice matters, and then it's making a difference in the workplace. So we are serious about trying to make this an excellent place to work and to serve kids and to serve each other and our community. It is still a workplace. It is not going to be perfect every day. Sometimes people are going to be angry. Sometimes they're going to be disappointed, right? We hope more often than not, they're proud, right? But the fact is, just like any other collection of human beings, we will have all of those emotions. But again, on balance, when people take a step back, we hope that they will look at this and say, this is a great place to work for a variety of different reasons, despite those kinds of things that are going to be there in every job that you have. So I appreciate I had someone suggest that this was a good time for a presentation like this, and I hope that this was useful to you and for the people watching online. I'd be happy to take any questions. This is just, again, a kind of a slice of the way that we try to engage our staff, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that people have at this time.
Very good, very thorough. Right, board members, any questions or comments? Amy?
So first, thank you for explaining all of those different areas and how they all relate to each other. It's really interesting to see all the things that we do as a district for our employee satisfaction. I'm wondering about, sort of spontaneous, if an employee has a really good idea in the middle of the year, and it's not near, they've already been around it, or if they have a complaint. How do we have some way that we, that we attempt to capture all of that, other than just hoping they'll tell us? What do we do?
So I think, as you've seen, we have several hardwired systems that are predictable. Rounding is predictable. Employee Experience Survey is predictable. District Services Survey is predictable. All of that is intended to create a trusting environment where when people have something like you just described, that they won't wait for that next time, right? So I, as a New Yorker, a complaint is not something bad for me, right? I mean, a complaint is an opportunity to make change. Sometimes we have to explicitly tell people, no, there's a difference between providing a productive complaint and complaining, right? There's a difference between the two. We seek to try to empower people to productively complain, to share what they need to have changed. And I do believe that most people, not everyone, but I do think that the data would suggest most people feel comfortable in bringing those kinds of things to a leader in the district. I'm not going to say it specifically, but to a leader in the district. I feel comfortable with that. And I also feel comfortable that I do think people are willing to share ideas. I think that it does more happen through the rounding process, but we are open to that. And I think that, again, based on the kinds of feedback that we get, I think that we do have a culture where that is valued. Now, the part is that in our system, like most systems, it depends on the idea. So an idea like I learned from an elementary school supervisor who teaches supervising how students enter the school. They had an idea to change the process, right, of where do students queue to get in for the school day? That's an idea you can say, try tomorrow, right? Let's do that. Let's try it, see how it goes. If you're talking about, you have an idea about- If you're talking about you have an idea about a massive change in instruction, that's got a few other layers it's going to go through, right? So we try to provide avenues for all of those kinds of things. And what I hope is that people feel comfortable saying something. Will everyone feel comfortable? No. But do we hope most people will? Yes.
Nice. Anyone else comment or question? Ben?
Thanks, Dr. Hillman. So it sounds like you just kind of did the district service survey recently because you had that group together. What's the timing on kind of the rest of these for this year? What does that look like?
So employee experience, we have done a couple of different ways. So the rounding has already happened. That happened in October, October through early November. We are thinking of changing that timeframe next year, kicking it back a little bit into November, just based on some feedback from our leaders about the alignment between the rounding window and the timing of the first required evaluations of the year. So that's something we're considering changing. Employee experience, we've done a couple of different times during the year. We are trying to standardize it kind of right after the Thanksgiving break. So we are scheduled to launch that in the next week or two here. And then, so those three, district service surveys in the fall. The other survey that we do, which is outside the realm of the employee engagement piece, but the parent satisfaction survey, we've done that a couple of different ways, but I think we have that scheduled this year for late February. January? Okay, so yeah, right at the end of the first semester, so January into February. So trying to put it at the end of the first semester, late enough where people have had enough experience to be able to give quality feedback, early enough that we can make some adjustments if needed yet.
Thank you. And I mean, from your standpoint, the superintendent, is there anything that you're looking for? Any theme that you're kind of interested in, kind of in the results as they come in over the next couple of months?
So there's, we are always looking at the questions that we, on the Employee Experience Survey, is what you're talking about. So I don't have those results in front of me in terms of the questions, but typically we are looking to try to improve the results on the questions that have been the lowest rated. So we've, there was a change in the questions of the Employee Experience Survey two years ago. One of the things that we have been working to improve, that we're hopeful we will see some improvement this year, is there's a question around the distribution of resources in the district. And we have tried, we had tried a few things over the years and just couldn't get the needle to move, right? Turns out that we've learned that people look at resources very differently. They might be thinking about how much paper they have access to. It might be about the number of FTE. The question for Val and I, really, it's about our financial resources, right? And how do people understand how we distribute those? So the leader action that we took last year is Val and I did a budget presentation in each school during the budget process in the late spring. And the intent there was to teach people about the budgeting process, to teach people about where our funding comes from, to teach people about where do we spend our money, because there's always perceptions about where we spend our money. So we use the audited results to share with people how those things are distributed. So that's one of the places that we're hoping to see some continued improvement in the Employee Experience Survey.
So it sounds like more of an understanding around kind of what resources means within that.
I think it's a clarification of that, and then also trying to make sure that people, people have that basic understanding of school finance, you know, so that as a member of our team, that was one of our six strategic commitments is stewardship, and we all play a role in stewardship. So something we say is that while the leadership is ultimately accountable for our school district culture, all of our employees are responsible for our school district culture, if that makes sense. So leadership is accountability, but we all have a responsibility to making this a better workplace. So we all have a responsibility to be well-informed. We all have a responsibility, have a basic understanding of how our finances work, of how our instructional systems work, things like that. Is that helpful?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you. Especially like the leader rounding thing. I'll have to go try that elsewhere.
We can teach you how to do it. It's fantastic.
Beautiful.
And it works in any system. Actually, it came out of healthcare. It came out of a healthcare, was a healthcare approach to help turn around some really struggling healthcare organizations, and it was ported education. It's been fantastic.
Anyone else? Okay, Jenny?
Thanks, Claudia. A few questions for you, Dr. Hillman. One on the district services survey. Is that, so the areas for improvement that you mentioned, that you receive and feedback, is that shared, are those shared with all staff, or only the leaders that were participating in the?
So that's a good question. We share it back with all the people who participated in the survey directly. So for example, we rolled out the data to all of the district office staff just a couple of weeks ago, and then it's, I think it's next week, in December, there's a Wednesday in December that we're doing a Zoom meeting for all of the people from the buildings to participate, to be, who took the survey. Now, I don't recall whether we have shared or put those district services survey results in, I'm guessing we did, but I just don't recall if we've shared district services survey results as part of our district staff newsletter. But we always want to share the results with the people who participated in the survey, if that makes sense. So like when we do the parent experience survey, we always share the results with all parents, right? So in the district services survey, for sure, it's rolled out to the people who participated in the survey. And again, the DSS is intended to be able to survey the people who most often consume the services of the district office. That typically is like building offices, each other, leadership, those kinds of things.
And then is that the same situation with the employee experience surveys too? It's shared with, well, in that case, it would be shared with all employees?
Correct, so at the building level. So what happens in the employee experience survey is, we've done this different ways over the years. I've recorded a video that they can include in their building rollout. I have done a Zoom meeting, you know, for everybody to participate. And then each building rolls out their individual building's employee experience survey results in a meeting. And so they will, we have a template. Everybody uses a similar slide deck. They report the district's overall results, and they report their individual results. And the employee experience survey, because there's 20 items, we typically will share, here are the two top-rated items, and here are the bottom two rated items, right? And again, that same thing, why do you think we're getting really good scores on the top two rated items? And what do you think we need to do to improve our results on those lowest-rated items, if that makes sense?
And then on the Core Performance Expectations, you mentioned that it's, I thought you mentioned it was tied to evaluations?
Not yet, starting, we had a three-year process of looking how to integrate those because these are, the Core Performance Expectations are something that are for every employee in the system. So we are currently working on rebooting the teacher development and evaluation, the teacher evaluation system. That's our largest group of employees. And as we work on that, that team, which has met twice so far, is scheduled to meet again on December 12th, they are going to be talking about how to integrate these core performance expectations into the regular evaluation as well. So for example, teachers have already a methodology in which we evaluate them. This would be something that will be integrated into that system. Educational assistants already have a system for being evaluated. These would be integrated in that. So that's the next step. We didn't feel as fair right away to be able to include these as part of your formal evaluation until people had had, we had a couple of years of being able to make sure that we shared them with people. So our next step is to begin to include them in employee evaluations. Now, to say they're not being used to help manage employee performance, that's different, right? Because when people are, we are using the language of high performance when we are giving people positive feedback, because the truth is that if you look at any study, 85 to 90% of employees are in that solid or high-performance range, and there's actually less than 10% who are consistently in that low, that low-performance range. So we're giving positive feedback more often than not. And if there are times where we have to give critical feedback to people, we are able to use the language of the low-performance components and say, hey, let's make sure we can bounce back here. And again, done in a way that's intended to help, not necessarily, not to discipline someone, if you will, but really just to help them be aware about moving back toward a higher level of performance, more of a coaching conversation to start.
Okay, and then final question. Do you, are you involved with, or do you conduct a large part of the leader rounding yourself?
Well, it depends on the year. So I round with all of the brand-new teachers. So that's how, what I've hardwired. So building principals round with most of their people. Special ed administrators round with special education staff. Child nutrition director rounds with child nutrition staff. Buildings and grounds director rounds with buildings and ground staff. So and then I have hardwired that I'm doing the rounding with the new teachers every year. And then, of course, I round, I have a modified rounding technique that I use with all of my direct reports semi-monthly. So twice a month, I meet with every one of our principals, directors, and we use a modified version of rounding because it's more, it's more frequent. But we use the shout-out question. We use the what's going well for you question. So we do a modified version of it with every leader twice a month, and then I do the new staff, new teaching staff in the fall.
Thanks. Anyone else question or comment? I just had one, easy one for you, the work teams. How popular are they? Do often have more applicants, if you will, than spaces or?
It depends on the summer, and it depends on the topics, right? So we have had a number of summers where we've had, we try to accommodate everyone who wants to participate. If we have someone who has signed up or applied for more than one team, if we're running out of space, we'll say, you're already on one team. But it's very common for us to have numerous people who are on multiple work teams in the summer.
Right. Thank you. Right, item B is our construction update, and this is the first.
It is the first construction update, so we just have a couple of items today. First, we just want to start off with, we want to, again, thank the voters for their overwhelming support of all three questions. We're very excited about that. We also want to thank Carleton College for their generous $2 million gift. We are working to have the first $1 million gift provided this spring, so it's going to come in a couple of installments. So that first $1 million gift, we're working with Carleton College right now to time it with the bond sale. I also want to thank Jean and Tim Vick. So Jean was a teacher for the district for quite some time, and after the bond passed, they made an appointment to come and see Val and I, Jean and Tim did. And they had just indicated their support, you know, for quite some time about improving the high school facility. And they came in and met with us and provided the district with a $10,000 check to go toward the bond referendum, to go toward things that would be associated with the, they didn't want to have any strings attached. They just wanted, so we just want to make a contribution to help out. And so I really thought that, they don't want a lot of notoriety, but we need to thank them, obviously. And then also, what was really inspiring about that is people in our community who want to see it, see things move forward, and they want to contribute, right? And so I think, you know, I'm hopeful maybe other people will think that same way, and of course, we'll take people to meet with Val and I whenever, if that's an option. But it's really such, I thought it was just a real amazing and generous thought. You know, they could have chosen anything. It was kind of around Give It To The Max Day, right? And these folks could have chosen to give to anything, but they were so inspired by the voter support, they wanted to make a contribution. And so grateful to Tim and Jean Vick for that $10,000 gift. In the packet, there is, there are some items about the process for the teams that will help begin reimagining Northfield High School. You have the packet, in the packet, I'm not going to go through each one, but you have the project oversight committee. That committee, first of all, let's start, take a step back. Every board member will have the option to participate on one of these three teams that I'm going to talk about. When we come back from the Thanksgiving break, Claudia and I are going to poll you and asking you which of these do you have an interest in, and then Claudia will make those final assignments. We do need to make sure that you take a look at the commitments for it. So project oversight, we're suggesting that two board, up to two board members could participate on that. That is likely going, well, not likely, that will last the entirety of the project, all the way through 2029. So that is a Zoom meeting. It meets for an hour, twice a month. And so you can see that we have those scheduled for the first and third Mondays, and it's from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. That's a Zoom meeting. The high school core planning group, 25 to 45 people total, were suggesting that three board members, up to three board members, would have the option of participating on that team. And again, that is a commitment to essentially nine, nine-meeting commitments. There are eight meetings, the first of which would be on December 17th, in conjunction with a community event that we're doing. And then in the packet, there's the list of the dates when the core planning group meeting would meet and the associated agenda items. That group will also do some touring of some other schools to get some ideas for design as part of. And you can think of planning, core planning as kind of the big bubbles, right? It's looking at the first iterations of what floor plans would look like. This is big picture. This is not precision, right? So this is getting, what should go adjacent to what? How should the layout be? Where should it sit on the site, those kinds of, we're not talking about where the light switches are, right? We're talking about more of that general overview perspective. There's going to be an activities and athletics subcommittee. So again, that will be around 20 to 30 people. We're recommending that up to two board members participate in that. That would meet four times, and those would be in conjunction, they would actually be the same days as the final four core planning team meetings. Those would take place in the afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. And again, that is going to focus on the athletic portion of it because that's obviously not just about the school experience, but it's also about interfacing with the community. So again, up to two board members could participate in that process. So these are the next items that you'll see. These three pieces will make these assignments as we come back in December, early December, so just after the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll poll you as to asking what your interest is, and then Claudia will have to make the assignments just to make sure that we've got it balanced as we move ahead. Couple of items that I want to share with you, and just to make sure you see, is that on December 17th, as I mentioned, between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m., excuse me, 6:00 and 7:30 p.m., excuse me, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., we're going to have a community event at the high school to invite everyone who wants to give some feedback or their hopes and dreams, if you will, for what the facilities will look like, the renovations, all of the things that go along with our projects. It's an opportunity for people to come. World architects and engineers will help us facilitate that, and it's for general members of the community just to say, I'd really like you to think about this. People don't have to be specific. They can be as specific as they want, or they can be as broad as they want. But what we want is before the core planning team really gets started in meeting, we want to give people in the community an opportunity to be able to provide input in this way. We're doing something similar for staff, and we're currently working with the District Youth Council to do something similar with students at both the middle school and the high school. So all of that data will come back to the core planning team as they work through their process. So that is what we have going right now, and just want to make sure board members are aware of that. Finally, I'm going to ask Val to help me out with this one. We did talk, have our first meeting with Ellers last week about planning the bond sale. So the bonds will be, the sale will be divided, as it's been in the past, into a couple of different sales. Do you want to just briefly overview that, Val?
Sure, on the spot. Hopefully, I got the dates right. So we had a brief conversation with Ellers about that. We're planning to do the first sale at $39 million, I believe. And the plan for that, I believe, is the second meeting in January is when it'll be in front of the board. There's a resolution for you to authorize the sale of the bonds, and then there's about a four-week window. And then the second meeting in February is when we would do the actual kind of bid day, get the results on, and then you would award the actual bond sale, and then we would have access to the funds in March. So that's the tentative timeline as of right this minute, so.
And then the second bond sale, so what you bond for first is the amount of money that we need to get the project started. And then you do the second bond sale. I think they actually were looking at 2027 when we would look at the next bond sale.
Yep, so the balance of the bond referendum would be currently targeted for May of '27. And so, again, that is an intentional strategy so that we don't have a large pool of money earning interest unnecessarily because there's arbitrage calculations and things that we aren't allowed to exceed a certain amount, and it results in less interest being paid on the bonds over the life of that term, so.
And all of these are projections right now. Like, I wouldn't be shocked to see the bond sale, this, you know, move a little bit later in February, watching the markets, just determining some of those things that are coming up. So it's, these are the focus areas for us right now, but you, it could shift just a little bit one way or the other. So we just want you to understand, we're getting ready for that sale. So we just want you to understand, we're getting ready for that sale. We're working with Ellers, who's been really, we've had some really successful bid days with them for bond sales in the past.
Yep.
So that's your first construction update. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board members. Corey?
Thanks, Dr. Hillman and Val for the update. Couple of financial questions. Can you talk a little bit about the Carlton gift and $2 million, how that impacts question one? Val, if you recall, at one of the community meetings, someone asked what that might save an interest. I don't know if you recall that number. I know it's not a gigantic number, but it's a matter, a number nevertheless.
Yes. So, so the $2 million are, so we're getting $1 million with our first bond sale and then the second million likely with the second bond sale is kind of how we're planning to structure that currently, but obviously open to discussion as things come about. Off the top of my head, my recollection is the difference in the interest was about $4 million when it was taken off the bond. So our original plan was to bond for 40 million and we're actually just bonding for 39 instead. And then we're coordinating with Carlton to get the $1 million in the spring, once we have that construction fund, that account open. And we can deposit it directly into that. And then the same thing will happen. May of '27, we'll take another million off of the, the amount we're bonding. And, but the calculation Ellers did, taking $2 million off their projection was about a $4 million overall savings.
Which is not insignificant.
Yes.
Another question related to financing. So remind us if question two had not passed, then the funding or the cost for the storm shelter had been in question one. Is there duplication in that? Am I remembering this correctly between question and question two? So are we going to realize some additional savings by having question two pass?
What we're going to be able to realize by question two passing is additional investment in the structure in question one. So question one did have dollars that were included for the storm shelter. And as what we described in meetings when we talked about this, it was also included in question two. So what that means is that we have two more $1 million in question one that is non-storm shelter, that will be able to assist with the improvements in the facility or in that, in that project. So that one is not a reduction. We never framed that as a reduction. We said that it would just give us more money to invest in the facility as part of question one, should question two pass. The dollars are in question two, to be able to help reinforce part of the expanded gymnasium as the storm shelter. Which is required now, by the way, just so people know. That's something that if you add on to it, you have to add that storm shelter.
Okay. Ben?
And then I was gonna just kind of pontificate for a moment. So those of us that own property in Rice County, you might have had your truth in taxation or tax estimate form show up in the mail this week or last week, depending on your mailman's delivery schedule. But that does not include, so when we look at the district portion, obviously, if people are curious, that, we're not going to see the referendum show up on that statement this year. Is that right, Dr. Hillman?
Yeah, that is correct. So on this, on the preliminary statement that you received just a couple of weeks ago, because they had to start producing those, if you remember back in September, you approved the preliminary levy. That sets off the process and then we have to finalize the levy. And that's the number that goes on that statement that you receive. They can't, they can't wait for the election to produce those documents. So the item that people received in the mail does not include the bond referendum, right? So that's why when you set the final levy, you will see the $40 million or the $39 million. We're going to have $40 million worth of funds, 39 million for which we're bonding, $1 million coming from the Carlton gift. So they will, you will see the $39 million because that's why it's important to know that it's going to be, that sale is going to be conducted this coming year. So that will be weaved in then to the, the tax bill that you pay in April.
Okay. Yeah, that's helpful. Just if anybody's listening and wondering if that was there.
And Val's going to clarify a little further.
I just want to make one clarifying point. The, not the full 39 million is what will be levied, only the amount that's required for the next year's debt payment. So that's what will get added. We're actually working to submit that to MDE right now. And then at the December 9th meeting, we'll do our final levy certification. And so the board will be able to see those additions.
Okay. So that, that total for next year, that would probably be less than the 39, is that what you're saying?
I, so the, the, the debt schedule will go to MDE for the 39 million, but what we levy for each year is just what the next year's debt payment is. So whatever that, whatever their calculation comes out to be, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like, expecting a $39 million increase on the levy. That's not the case.
Gotcha. That's a good clarification. Yeah. And I would say too, I mean, it just, every year that estimated market value seems to go up, at least for, for my house a little bit. But it was encouraging to see that, you know, I think the, the district, I know there's some sensitivity about different units of government. I think the district this year that even though the value went up, my overall sort of impact in the district was about the same or a little bit less. So I guess just a good, continue to tell that story of being good, good financial stewards as far as the district goes. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Ben. Amy?
So for these committees, if we have people who are watching this and think that they really would love to be on these committees, what do they do? How do they let us know that?
So last week, we emailed all families and posted on our website. We've worked with KYM and radio, who is also going to be helping us spread the word on our social media pages now through our family update. There is a fairly thorough description of the various, of the committees that people can participate on. And then there's a Google form that we're asking people to complete to express their interest. When I looked earlier today, I think we were up to 17 or 18 people so far. So, you know, we're really in need of around 60 or so people, if you think about between both the athletics subcommittee, activities athletics subcommittee, and the core planning team. So what we're hoping is that those are open through, I believe it's December 8th, if I'm remembering correctly. And so we'll continue to advocate for people to apply for those teams. We have done a distribution of stakeholders. So obviously, we want to have well-represented stakeholder groups. So we have, you know, space for teachers from specific departments. We have space for high school students, for middle school students. We have places for parents, right? We have a place for a community member at large. We just talked with the city today to have a representative from the city and a representative from law enforcement to be part of it. So a variety of different stakeholders. And of course, we have to look at who applies and how they fit with that stakeholder group. And so we are hopeful that people who apply will be selected to participate. In the event, not everyone gets, very likely, it'll be more applicants than space available. And that's why events like that, December 17th, community input event is something that people can also use to share their thoughts as well.
So just to follow up, to be very exact, if you're not getting the family update...
Go to our school website. Yep.
And look for?
It's the first store on the page that says apply to be part of a core planning team.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else comment or question? Jenny?
I just had a question about the, the committees here. On the project oversight committee, so under the goals and responsibilities, it's listed, set district standards and review and monitor the budget. Those are two that all school board members are responsible for, correct, during this entire process? So then what, what would the main differences be then for the two board members that you would like to see on that committee?
The, so the difference in the, in the responsibilities?
Right. Because we're all, I mean, all of us board members are responsible for those two items.
Right. So the difference, I would say, for the entire board versus the couple of people who are on that board, on, on that committee, the people who are on the committee are seeing the entire process, right? We're checking it, meeting to meeting, all of those things. And then the board will get regular updates from this committee, right? Or from, from the project oversight committee. But think of it as the, the, the continuous review of progress on timing, budget, all of those kinds of things. And then those project oversight committee board members will help Val and I provide the more regular report to the board for those items where they have any approvals to make. Think of it as maintenance, right? The, the project oversight team is really about maintenance of the process. The full board comes in at various checkpoints in the process, if you will. But this is to keep the trains running on time in terms of the projects.
Anyone else question or comment? Okay, Ben?
I just, just one thought. Would it be appropriate to put that kind of link too on the reimagine page for people to sign up, just because people are familiar with that?
Yes. I just, I just didn't get to that yet. We're working on rebooting the reimagine website to be the placeholder for all of the construction information. We just ran, we just ran out of time today. So.
No worries. Thanks. Just.
Anyone else? All right. Then we will move on to item six, which is committee reports. I understand we don't have any at this point. And then next is our consent agenda. As a reminder, there were some personnel items in at the table file tonight added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration?
Um, I don't necess, I'm sorry. I don't necessarily want to pull it, but can I make a couple of comments on one of the items without actually pulling it for separate?
On the, the consent agenda, we don't have discussion, but if you want to make some observations, that's fine.
Yeah, it's just observations. It's not a discussion. It's just, um, yeah, I guess on some information that the, for the school resource officer contract, there's a policy 507.5. And it seems like since things were added to the contract, that maybe it's a good time to look at that policy, just make sure it aligns with the contract. Because the statement of the policy says, any contract for the services of the school, school resources officer with the school district must meet the requirements of this policy. So because things were added, those should probably be added to the policy, I think.
Yeah, we'll take it. We just adopted that policy this summer, Rob. That was a brand-new policy that was required. And then actually, cities are also now required to adopt a policy. They just got their policy last week, as a matter of fact. That was, there's a couple of additions. They only, whoever provides that policy advice to cities, that policy was only generated last week. I'm fairly confident that the, the confident, or the, excuse me, the contract as presented meets the requirements of the policy. But we can certainly take a look at that as well and, and validate. And if there's any adjustments that the policy needs to be made. I'm confident that we're in good shape, but we'll just do another review of it.
And it would be nice to cross-reference the city policy, since that's mentioned in the contract. And it's impossible to find anything on the city website. So it would be nice to have a link to that.
We can take that note and adjust that. And I think for just adding a cross-reference, that's not something we need to bring it back to the board, just adding the cross-reference.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good. Okay. Was there anything anybody wanted to pull? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping?
So moved.
By Ben? It's okay? By Rob? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is items for individual action, and we only have one item. This is the policy committee recommendations. And so I move to approve the policy committee's recommended updates as presented for policies 521, 524, dot 2, 532, 535, 608, 614, and 708. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Corey. Are there any questions or comments about these policies at this time?
Just want to make one comment on policy 521. I had a board member just catch that in letter C, to see there should have been the word or after each of the first three conditions. And those ors have been added, just it's any one of those conditions. So that's the only change that was real substantial between the last time that you looked at that and tonight.
Okay. Good. Anything else? All right. Then all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Next is our items for information. Do you have any items, Dr. Hillman?
I do not.
Right. And then item 10 is our future meetings. And those are Monday, December 9th, 6:00 p.m., regular board meeting in this boardroom. Monday, January 13th, 6:00 p.m. is our organizational meeting. And then immediately following will be a regular meeting, also in this boardroom. Monday, January 27th, 6:00 p.m., another regular meeting, also in this boardroom. At this time, we're going to move into a closed session for labor negotiations. Yes?
So that December 17th meeting, is that something for, that all the board members should be part of about the reimagine Northfield? Yes, that's because I'm just seeing, it's not on here, so I was unclear.
Right. No, you would be invited. It's a community event, you know, so board members are of course invited to that, should they want to attend. Wouldn't be a requirement. If you're on the core planning team, it's a requirement, right? But otherwise, everyone would be of course invited to attend.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So we're going to move into a closed session for labor negotiations. At this time, I'm going to invite the public to exit. Help yourselves to a piece of cake when you, and then we, when we close the, the closed session, we will return to our regular meeting and adjourn immediately. This meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota statute 13D dot oh three to discuss labor negotiations. I move that we move, I move that we go to a closed session. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Ben? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.